I want to call the April 27, 2023, meeting of the New London Select Board to order. And I would ask that anyone who is going to speak tonight, please come to the podium. This meeting is being recorded, so we want to make sure we have every. State your name and then you can go on. The first item on our agenda is Bob for to talk about Snowcrest Owners Association. He's here to discuss the speed limit. This is Route 11 adjacent to West Side Drive. Is that right, Bob? Okay, would you come up, please?
Good evening. Thanks for having us here tonight. I'm going to introduce Art to really talk about the details, but again, my name is Bob Montagna. I represent Snowcrest, which is West Side Drive, which we have been in discussion for a period of time. As you mentioned, we had received the letter from the state DOT regarding the options for speed, and that's what we wanted to discuss and get your recommendations as we go forward. So to that point, Art will represent us in our details. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Art Scutro from West Side Drive. We're here to review with you the letter that was sent to you, not to us, that Kim was kind enough to forward to us and ask for our viewpoint, so that you can come to some answer to the letter, because the letter clearly asks you for your views on the different speed limits that the DOT is proposing, and also wants to meet with you at some future date. And hopefully, after this meeting, you might decide what you want to do and when. This is the letter that he'd sent, and I want to say, my initial review of it, I was very disappointed. I was disappointed because he did not determine what changes could be made to the intersection that you requested in your letter of September 8, asking what changes could be made to the intersection, so that we can go in and out safely. I was also disappointed that he relied on data to reach a conclusion that the 35 mile an hour limit we requested was not justified. There's no mention in the letter of the conditions of the roadway. The conditions of the roadway were the subject of our discussion with you on the on August 18th. They were also highlighted in the January 6 meeting at the, I'll get it right, Upper Valley Lake Senape Regional Planning Commission. Five different points regarding the road conditions were highlighted to you and to them. Downhill runway slope of 6.6 degrees, poor sight lines, 300 feet east, 500 west, limited reaction time to 500, 50 mile an hour vehicles, no brake land load or lumbar shoulder, and a sharply sloped downward turn onto West Side Drive. Not mentioned at all in the letter or stated as considered by him. On the second reading of the letter, I picked up something that was really characteristic of DOT's entire response to our concern over safety. On the second page, when he refers to the January meeting, he said it was a stakeholder meeting to discuss speed concerns expressed by the residents. We have had from day one hammered that this was a safety concern. The front page of the presentation, I think I have here, says clearly, sorry, it's a safety issue. There's no word "speed" on that page. They've been very consistent in this regard. In responding to our August presentation, the August 30 letter to you again, mentioned speed 45 times. The word "safety" never appeared. The one we just received mentioned speed 40 times, but the word "safety" came in once, just once. The second reading also caught my attention in the reference to the Federal Manual of Uniform Traffic Code Designations. I think I got that right. It was a rainy day on Sunday, so I found the 864-page document. I didn't read it, I skimmed it. There are two extracts that I asked Kim to make slides of that are important for you to see. Slide 1 shows the definitions used in the entire manual. I've highlighted some key points. Section 1A13, standard. A standard is a statement of required mandatory or specifically prohibitive practice regarding a traffic control device. A speed sign is a traffic control device. Under B, guidance, a statement of recommended but not mandatory practice in typical situations. Number C, option, a statement of practice that is permissive condition and carries no requirement or recommendation. D, support, informational statement, and you can see the rest of it. The second slide is the Speed Sign Regulation, Section 2B13. And you'll see highlighted under standard. Speed zones shall only be established on the basis of an engineering study that has been performed in accordance with traffic engineering practices. This engineering study shall include analysis of current speed distribution of free-flowing vehicles. That exact standard is quoted in the DOT letter that was sent to you recently. Further down on that page, if you'll bring it up a little, please, Kim, you'll see under guidance, and guidance is recommended, not mandatory, is another quote from the letter regarding the speed should be five within five miles an hour of an 85 percentile of free-flowing traffic. Down further on the page, highlighted is option. Other factors that may be considered when establishing or reevaluating speed limits are the following: road conditions, sheltered conditions, I'm sorry, road characteristics, shoulder conditions, grade alignment, and site distance. Our page from our prior meetings has that exact language in it. Those are permitted under the rule to be considered. So I question two things. Were they considered? If not, why? They're very important to the safety of our citizens, the 37 residents of West Side Drive and Snow Lane. Secondly, were any other speed percentiles considered, other than the 85% that was only recommended? It wasn't mandatory. The letter DOT sent assumes it was mandatory. If you review this information, you come to a different conclusion than the one he I would have written the letter as follows. We thank the Select Board for its recommendation to continue our evaluation, and have determined that changing the speed limit to 35 miles an hour will allow the residents to enter and exit safely, and is in order and justified under Section 2B13, which permits other factors to be considered at more reasonable limits than the 85 percentile recommended. I hope you agree with this conclusion and can use this information in whatever meeting you establish to resolve the matter that he's presented to you. As a footnote, we did poll the residents to see if they preferred a 50 mile an hour zip limit, or a 45, or a 55, which is outrageous, that he has indicated in this letter. And clearly, we'll take the five miles an hour if we can get it, but we need much more than that for the safety of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. We know you all have spent a great deal of time considering this and definitely researching it. So your recommendation is to go to 35 miles an hour, that we should pursue that. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. It's the only safe way to do it. We're not asking for anything more than a sign to be moved 300, 300 yards, as you know. This isn't miles of roadway.
Right, yeah, okay.
Very simple requirement.
All right. Do I have any? Bill, do you have any comment? We all worked there.
So Art, as usual, you're succinct and right, right, right to the point. My concern at this point is that if we don't accept, at least as an interim measure, the recommendation that Mr. Lambert makes, and apparently your neighbors all agree to, to go at least to 45 miles an hour, that we may lose a chance to get any traction here at all. I think the town has had a longstanding set of issues with DOT over major road issues, the Four Corners being the best example, where we've even had deaths and not been able to get help with that intersection, other than the engine, re-engineering of the turn lane there a few, few years ago. So, you know, I think we need to be realistic in terms of our ability to move this creature along, and so I would, I would hope that we would continue to support you with communications with the Department of Transportation, but being realistic that we ought to at least take what we've been offered in terms of the 45 mile an hour option. And that, his letter asked us to pick one of three, and I don't think there was a fourth one. So I think we need to pick the best one now and keep, keep working on it, but not, I'm not as optimistic as I would like to be that we're going to move mountains here.
Okay, thanks, Bill. BB, do you have something you want to say?
Well, I am the new kid on the block, but I'm impressed by all the work that you all have done on this issue. It's, and, and the response that I think they've given to you, the work that's been done, has been quite a bit, but I, I agree, I think we should go along with their second recommendation for now, at least to hopefully give you all a little bit of relief, but I would be in support of, you know, you continuing on to try to get them to do something. I live on Old Main Street, and so I, when I come down from Flying Goose to take a right on Old Main Street, I, I get it. I get cars that are right up behind me, but I also have a larger breakdown lane there on the side that I can pull over to, to take a turn, so. The, it's, the, the speeding is bad all over town, for sure. So I really appreciate all the work that you all have done on this, but I, I agree that I would try to go along with their number two recommendation for now.
I understand you would take that position, but do you plan to call him to task with regard to ignoring the road conditions and not mentioning them in your review? And even ignoring recommendation changes? I mean, you asked for that, and he gave you nothing. I'm very disappointed.
I guess, Art, you know, I think if we do encourage them to lower the speed limit, recommend that, and then monitor it, and also have another conversation with them. And if we have to go down to Concord to do that, I'm more than willing to do that and hear a fuller explanation of why they don't necessarily agree with some of the recommendations you made. So I hope that at this point, we can at least recommend the 45 mile an hour speed limit and then monitor it. I know that's not really what you wanted to hear, but we don't, unfortunately, we can't make DOT do anything. All we can do is really encourage them strongly to do something.
Well, the other, other question, is there any other appeal process available to the governor or anyone else directly?
Well, I think that, you know, we have, we sent a letter to the governor, and we have spoken with our representatives, Dan Wolf and I know, and Karen Ebel, and I know you all have also spoken with them. So, I mean, I think that's the avenue we need to take, is through them to get some action on this, I guess.
The route we would take if we settled there would be to ask for some mitigation. As you may or may not know, the roadway narrows to four and a half feet. There's no possibility to move, to get out of the way of the traveling 45 or 50 mile an hour vehicles.
Right.
They honk at us, they blow, it's, it's a, it's a real scene there, and I think some of you might have witnessed that. So consideration of having something like that done would be very helpful to us.
Right, yeah.
Would you instigate that conversation?
Well, I think we can talk about it, but there's going to have to be engineering done to make sure that it's feasible and that there's room to widen it, which I think there is, but I'm not an engineer, so I don't know.
No.
With, the town certainly couldn't try to do this because it's not in our budget, number one, and it is a state road, number two. So I think we need to have the state of New Hampshire DOT do that, and they have the engineers that are capable of widening it, and putting a breakdown lane, I guess, that's what we need.
Will you request it in this instance, that you're going to respond to this letter?
Well, I think, I think what we're going to do is make the recommendation of 45 miles an hour, and then perhaps see if we can set up a time to meet with Mr. Lambert.
Art, on the, on the way here tonight, I decided I wanted to make one more pass, so I actually did, did the drive from down Route 11 and, and, and back up here. And I understand totally what you're saying, so I, I think it's, it's not a lack of empathy for your situation, but to try to articulate what we're all saying here is, let's take what we have, let's, let's not leave things at 50, let's take 45, and at the same time, let's continue the process, which, as far as Route 11 on the other side of town is concerned, has been going on for at least 10 years with, with DOT. But I, I think we have to be realistic, that this is not a, they're not waiting to see if they can do more things to help us at this point. So, yes, you know, I, I would hope that we're going to continue to support our efforts to deal with your safety issue, to deal with the safety issue that BB refers to on, on the other side, on the other Route 11 thing, but we also need to be, be realist. The one thing I would suggest that your group might want to consider doing is, there's a new voice in this situation now. We have a new state senator. As I think you know, Ruth Ward no longer represents New London, so you, you might try, or we might try on your behalf, to see if Ms. Prentice would like to get, get involved in this discussion also. Perhaps a new voice might, might be heard.
Yeah.
But we, we need to continue to do the things to do, but we shouldn't leave here tonight thinking, oh, in a couple of months, we'll, we'll hear something back, because I don't think that's realistic, given the decade-long record we have on the other Route 11, other part of Route 11. Just being realistic.
I understand. Bob, I'll turn it back to you, or is anybody else?
I think I understand, I've heard this once before at one of these meetings, so I think I know the area they're talking about, and it sounds like just moving the speed limit sign by 100 yards or whatever it is. I'm not trying to minimize that. I understand DOT has their procedures, but my question is, do we understand why DOT does not, is not engaging on this and can't simply just do it? I'm, it just seems like such a simple thing. I understand it's not, but if they come back and said, this is why we're not going to do it?
Actually, they have. The speed limits are established by state law, and so they are following the RSA's. I think if, if the law were to change regarding speed limits and how they're determined, then that would make a difference. But we've had several communications with the Department of Transportation. He has been here to, to see the area in, in question, so it's not that he's not aware of where West Side Drive is in relationship to the off-ramp of Exit 12. So I think that, you know, we just need to keep pushing, I guess. Yes?
Tom Flynn and I live on Snow Lane off of West Side Drive. Is the board concerned with the safety of the taxpayers?
Absolutely.
I don't get a sense that you guys really want to push this thing.
I'm sorry, I don't know why you have that impression.
Well, you know, we've been dealing with Bill Lambert now for, what, six years, at least, trying to get two signs moved, and we've gotten, we've been basically told to pound sand by him. And I would hope that our representatives, who represent us, the taxpayers, would display a little more concern than I get the impression here that you guys have. Say, okay, we'll take 45. My experience is, if you don't ask, you don't get. And to play ball with Bill Lambert, who said, oh, I'll, I'll be big, I'll give you 45, that's not going to get us to where we need to be. Just an observation. And I would really hope that instead of saying, oh, okay, we can wait 10 years, or whatever, that we get you guys to be advocates for the taxpayers.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I disagree with you. We are, and, but we're not the type of people that pound the table and demand things. We're going to try to do this in a reasonable way. And I know that's different from what's going on in this country overall, but in this town, we're going to ask people politely and often if they will help us. And I think he's willing to do that, and this is the recommendation he came up with.
Yeah, that's, that's not our experience in dealing with him so far, and I would hope that, you know, you'd represent our interests, you know. He's got, you know, he's a bureaucrat, and he's going to delay and obfuscate and, you know, try and play rope-a-dope with us and keep us at arm's length and hope that we will go away. Well, we're not going to go away. And, you know, Lord help us, if somebody gets hurt at that intersection, you know, this is, this is not something we want, so.
Neither do we.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. All right, so do I have a motion to request that the state change the speed limit from 50 to 45 miles an hour in the recommendation that they made with regard to, from George's Mills to New London Village?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Our next item on the agenda is Phil Sherman will present an update on the Webel Hall project. Hi, Phil.
Good evening. This will, in my mind, be the first of probably five monthly reports to the Select Board. My intent would be to generally use this format, so stay tuned into it. If you want more or you want less, just let me know. We're feeling our way here a little bit. I'll start with general, a couple of very short general comments, scope, schedule, budget. Anything else? So, we've had three construction phase preparatory meetings, the PD, DPW, and I apologize, Kim and Will don't have a catchy acronym, but the folks from the town office, and I'm sure Lynn behind the scenes, have, have been involved. Submittals, which are the contractor's written understanding of what we're asking them to do, they come in, the architect reviews them, and then bang, they're approved to go purchase this stuff. They're in the process, they're being approved as they come in, and requests, a couple of requests for information or clarification have been resolved. In terms of the scope, there's an ongoing discussion about casters on chairs. That, I think, is mostly with Kim and Frank. That will get resolved at some point here. Two things have been added to the project. I want to mention them now, and I'll be back to them in a minute. One is the Wi-Fi cost to tie the AV into Zoom and all of that stuff, and the other is the cost to remove the AV system, get it out of the room, do the project, and then reinstall it. I'll come back to those in a second. In terms of the schedule, we're ready to start Monday morning. North Branch at that point will effectively own this room. They will control it. They answer to a very, very high level of sort of OSHA safety control operations. So they're asking that anyone who needs to come in here, if you want to, you're welcome to look around, you need to contact them first. Fine, just stick your head in the door and say, who's from North Branch here? But, but none of us will be sort of wandering in and out of the room without them knowing that we're here, because they, they own the problem if we fall off of something or something lands on our head. Safety shoes are required, so they can't provide those. They will provide hard hats and safety glasses if you need them when you get here, but you've got to have safety shoes to come in here during the project. And basically, their perimeter is this room, so the lobby will be in and out, Putnam will still be working there, and, but the, but the safety perimeter, if you will, will be coming into the room here. Okay, I want to talk about risk items, but I don't want you to, I don't want you to go too far with this. When I talk about risk, it's just something that says, eh, keep our antenna up here, it might turn into a problem, and the things that might turn into a problem, we want to already be watching them, so we can catch them before they turn into problems. But the things that are on my list right now include the HVAC design. Basically, what we found was that because of the type of building, we need engineered sealed drawings to, to sort of finalize the HVAC, so there's a time to do that, then there will be submittals, and then they will, will proceed to buy it and install it. That's, that adds, say, three weeks into the cycle here, so all it does is kick the installation of the HVAC out a little bit. As long as it works, it works, if, but again, there's a risk there if something gets delayed. We found out today that the lights, there's some new lights going in the ceiling here, they were specified because they were available, and between the time they were specified and this afternoon at 1 o'clock, there are now a 16-week lead time. Welcome to the United States supply chain of 2003, right? So they're going back and looking at whether they can get a different type of light that's got a shorter, shorter lead time. And lastly, the contractor who was going to refinish the floor suddenly determined that August means it's August, and he's busy, so North Branch is on the search for a substitute subcontractor for that. That's literally almost the last thing that happened, so we've got time to, to deal with that. So again, risk does not mean it's a problem, it just means it's something we're going to keep a list every week when we have our meetings, people on top of this, and be sure that it's not slipping away from us. Last thing on schedule, the dollies for the chairs, they promised us by the end of April, that's tomorrow night at 5 o'clock, as near as I can tell, and they're not here yet. Frank Anzalone and Amanda have made several phone calls to them, and they can't get a straight answer, so maybe they're on a truck ready to pull in here, or maybe not, but we'll stay on it, and they, they were real nice people, they wanted to get paid in advance for those. Budget-wise, we received North Branch's preliminary view of what they were going to be invoicing and when. That's a fully loaded estimate, as though all the contingencies get spent, so that went to Kim and I'm sure Lynn, just to give a, sort of a heads-up as to the sequence on cash flow needs to pay invoices. And ideally, and in all probability, the actual invoices will be less than that, because contingencies won't be, be completely loaded into that. Now, Wi-Fi costs, something on the order of $7,500. Everybody put their seatbelt on here. The cost to remove this AV system, stuff it in the skate room in the lobby, then put it back in August and hook it back up is $13,000. So $7,500 and $13,000 takes us to a, basically takes the owner's contingency in the budget down to 30% before we ever start the project. So that's, there's damage there. What sayest thou? We can charge right along, we've got, you know, some slack built into numbers here and there, but that owner's contingency is, is intended to handle things that we find along the way and say, oh, we want to add this, or whatever. There will be a minimal ability, ability to do that. So I just want to put that in front of you. So I just want to put that in front of you.
Were you aware that this was going to happen?
The Wi-Fi has been sort of dangling out there since the AV system went in. So there was no awareness that that was going to be part of this problem, project, at least on my part. The cost to the AV system, if I understand it from Kim, is heavily driven by the fact that it has to be done. They're going to be in here tomorrow morning. They'll finish removing it on Monday. In fact, they started today. They took the back speakers out. And essentially, that it's probably something they didn't want to do. It's just, it's an outrageous price. Almost everybody agrees with that, so.
Wi-Fi was never originally considered when the audiovisual system was designed?
I, the Wi-Fi, I think, was added to the AV system as the AV system was being installed. But it was never identified as something that this project had, had to deal with.
Phil, has the hazardous materials investigation been completed?
Yeah, they were in here last Friday. They owe us what they call preliminary responses by tomorrow. I'll be on them if we don't hear from them, and then we'll get a formal report two weeks later. North Branch says the preliminary answer is all they really need to, and they've got time where they're not breaking into things before, before they really need that answer, so.
Okay, thank you. Phil, do you have any questions?
Who is the "they" that's doing the removal and storage of this equipment?
Star Sound, the people who-
Same people that put it in?
Supplied it and put it in, yeah. One of the issues, of course, is if, as Kim has pointed out rightfully, and Will, if somebody else does this, and it goes back together and it doesn't work, Star Sound's off the hook. And there apparently still are glitches with, with at least this screen back here. So we don't really have a choice at this point, barring a delay to the project while we figure something else out.
So it raises an interesting question, at least in, in my mind, BB and Janet, maybe Kim. While this is all down, are we going to take any look at some of the things that perhaps bother some of us about this system before we just put a system that some of us don't think is totally satisfactory back in place?
We like the system generally. I mean, we are getting these glitches fixed. We do want to secure the cabinet over there. Some of these things, you know, the, the blinking monitors do have to get fixed. I think now that we have the rechargeable mics, we're happy with those. I think the system works well. Will can speak to it as well. I think it does good recording of our meetings. So the system itself is a good one, I think. But we have had glitches that we've had to fix. And now the Zoom, we did get the Zoom capability, but we won't be able to test it really, because this is our last meeting. So that is more equipment that we had to put in. I want to say that was an additional, maybe five thousand dollars. And we were able to sell the piece that we no longer need. So, I mean, I-
It may be my aging eyes, but when I've been out in the audience at other meetings, I find the screen in the back very difficult to read. And because the presenters can't use pointers on any of the side ones, they're always using the one in the back. So I'm not, I don't find it a particularly useful system in terms of if I'm sitting back where Bob Lyon is sitting right now, for example. I don't know what others' experience is, but this opportunity to raise that question.
Yeah, we have not raised that to Star Sound. I think these monitors, like that one was-
Am I the only one that's been bothered by that?
I usually am here. So I don't know.
Oh, you're going to get your chance soon.
All right, yeah, I'll get your chance soon, yeah.
But Bob, can you? Hello, Bob? Hello, Bob? Can you, can you read what's on that back screen from where you're sitting?
The screen here?
The one all the way in the back, yep.
I can, I can read the, what's in bold. I can read public comments. Can you make it larger?
Yeah, I just did.
Okay.
How large can you make it?
Maybe we don't need to spend the time tonight, Janet, on that. But I at least, while it's down, would like us to have an opportunity to-
Speak with them.
To speak with a group of people who tried to be users. I mean, I find, particularly at the planning board meetings, when a developer is making a presentation, and it's clear on the side screens here in terms of color, they can't point at it because you can't use a pointer on the, these side screens.
Right.
There must be a remedy for that in this technological age. And I assume this screen up here is of use only because it's needed for the recording, is that right?
No, we could have that also have plans. And that was the original idea, that board members would have the plans or whatever they're looking at. It was originally a smaller, it was originally going to be two TVs, the first go-around. And then we asked that it be one, and as big as we could get it. You know, you can see, we couldn't raise it down too far because there's the camera there, so. I mean, some of this is a creature of the space we have. You know, there was discussion maybe of putting monitors on the side so people in the back could look to the sides. But it was determined that the front ones were the best way to go.
So all I'm doing is saying, while we're spending thirteen thousand dollars to essentially take something down and put it back up, I at least would like to have some discussion about the utility of it and whether it could be improved while it's, while it's being reinstalled.
Here's one thing that would need to be, would need to be decided very, very quickly, like in a week. One of the discussions early on was whether to take that screen and pull it toward the front of the stage and take the projector and put it out here. That would at least bring it, you know, twelve or fifteen feet closer. This ceiling has stuff going on it, and that's going to happen sooner rather than later. So if there's any thought that that ought to happen, it, it needs to be brought up fast, along with some money from somewhere. Sorry?
That's another twenty grand, that's-
Well, yeah. Well, I think the projector would be fine. You just move the whole, the whole process out. But that screen does not go up and down, or at least doesn't seem to work very well.
I guess, Phil, that I would rely on the two on either side of the stage rather than trying to move the large one.
You do what?
Stick with the two we have on either side of the stage. That's what people look at when they're here. Like, planning board members, if they, if they don't have their laptop with them, and they can't see it on that, you know.
But I'm just saying, I've said my decision.
All right. Well, we need to make a decision if you want to change it. We need to, as Phil is saying, if we want something different, now is the time to make that decision.
Pay attention here, Lynn.
Ed's going to be here, Bill, tomorrow and Monday, so if you want to come and run these things, because those things were talked about, as Phil mentioned, especially the issue of the-
But, you know, it's annoying to me that that screen is back there, and that somebody is standing, or Phil is standing with a pointer. And the only thing they can point to is one way back there, because it doesn't work on these side ones. And if I'm sitting where Bob's sitting, you know, maybe I need to go to the eye doctor's more.
Yeah.
Maybe it's hard, you, yes, you or Adam or whoever are sitting here can blow it up and so on, but we've invested a hundred thousand dollars in the system, and it's still not as good as the one we have in the professional development center.
This room is big. I mean, this is a lot, no, it doesn't have these, these high ceilings. That was the problem with the, the screen in the back and the projector.
With regard to the planning board, Adam can use his computer to indicate where we are on a plan. And that will show up on that one. I, I'm not sure I'm ready to spend another thirteen thousand dollars if, if we can-
But if we were spending thirteen thousand, taking it down, put it back-
Right, but I mean, something different, and an additional amount of money to change it.
I don't know what the solution would be. It would be as simple as, hey, the projector over where Phil's standing right now, moving the screen forward.
I think some of, some of it is just how you zoom it, just as Kim just did, right? You can make it very large.
I have this plan, where we're supposedly spending all this money in this room to make it usable for a variety of different purposes and so on. But, you know, if that's, is the best way to do it, then what if somebody wants to have a movie in here? Is this the best way to do it, that the screen is that far back? I don't know. But, you know, we're like a lot of other things. We're, you know, this installation is not-
This, this installation has not been a happy one for, for many different reasons. And here, you know, Zoom, the Wi-Fi, and so on. And here we are again. But, you know, if, I'm, I'm late to the party, so I've said my piece.
Okay. BB? You don't want to add anything?
Just, just the question, is the Wi-Fi charges, is that going to allow the, these meetings to be livestreamed, to be on Zoom? Is that the reason?
It will allow them to be basically a one-way Zoom, right?
Right, we will have Zoom capabilities. The, the better Wi-Fi will also be better for elections. We'll also have a secure Wi-Fi for the presentations that the town puts on. And then people in the audience could be on Wi-Fi, and it wouldn't suck the Wi-Fi from what we need to do this.
Got it.
We have to do that.
What's that?
We have to do the Wi-Fi part, the Zoom.
Right.
I'm talking about the juxtaposition of the equipment that we have here. There are a lot of screens that aren't particularly useful.
Phil, do you have anything else you want to add?
No, that was my report. And if that sort of level of detail is sufficient, we'll just keep you updated on a monthly basis, or if anything big comes up in the meantime.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have public comments.
See if she wants to- Should we go?
We'll wait till everybody leaves. Yeah, if you, yeah, yeah, go ahead. So are there any public comments about anything that is not on our agenda? Joe?
I'm going to let Mo go first.
Let's see if we can jump along.
Yeah, yeah.
You should go, she's already on the sidewalk.
Unless you, go ahead, go ahead, Joe.
I won't, I won't. Joe Cardillo. I know it was a revised agenda. We were hopeful New London Springfield Water Precinct would be here tonight. But they're not. So just briefly, over the last few weeks, I had the opportunity to sit through a planning board meeting, and then it had to reconvene for the Twin Pines project. We understand why, and it's a water situation. So one of the largest developments we've seen in a while. They have to put in their own wells. It leads to concern about what's going on behind the hospital. Will they be able to put in wells with all the asphalt that's going on there? So what happens to a project like that? I had the opportunity to learn about a conceptual plan on Main Street where Charter Trust was going to be. I don't know all the details of it. I do know that it was some type of open-air dining or market of some sort. It sounded intriguing, encouraging, that there was some growth going to happen on, on Main Street. More things coming, which is what Main Street needs desperately, not just real estate offices and lawyers' offices, so. And then in that same conversation, when I was in the town hall, I, I learned that other projects that I'm watching happen, which I think they've done a good job with, the Pella Building, apartments that have now been approved to go from two to five. All these projects may continue to have water issues that get into the conversation. So although there's water, water everywhere, there may not be a drop to drink for a while. So really, the only reason to come up here is to say, you know, we've got down at letter F priorities with one item. I think there's room for more items. And I would suggest that the number-one priority is, is actually water right now. That as citizens, I should know, I'm in the precinct, I haven't checked, will I ever be compromised for water? I do know enough, being involved in conversations with Budget Committee, that we've earmarked some ARPA funds to give to the precinct. But the reality is, I don't know, and maybe it's my own fault, where we're at in, in the process of digging up Main Street. Has it been engineered? Do we have, and I guess, and I'm, I'm comfortable with waiting till they come in again, do we have a supply problem, or is it a delivery problem? Is it both? I'm understanding it's both. If we can get proactive on correcting the delivery problem, there, there's other things. It's like a, a series of dominoes. We can't address the sidewalks, which we've earmarked money for. We can't address any improvements on Main Street until, until we get this done. So I would like to suggest that the selectmen find a way to weekly make water, a conversation about water, a priority. You know, I'm hearing conversations going on around town. There is concern. I'm sure you're hearing the same conversations, right? Because we all get a little bit of information. We, we, we hear the final result, it's great. We've approved a sixty-apartment complex, that's great. We found a way to get them water. But there's a lot of unanswered questions. Will the project at New London Place be able to go forward? Will any of these projects where people are coming in with conceptual plans have an ability to go forward? And maybe the answer lies only with the precinct. But I think it's important that it's discussed here, and it's discussed here often. And I would also suggest that if, if it's truly priorities, that maybe we move our priorities right up after old business. So it's early on in the meeting, people who want to come and hear what the priorities are for the selectmen and, and the citizens will have an ability to hear it. So I think water is important. That's the only point I wanted to make, and I think it's important that we get focused on that on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. The precinct commissioners are going to come in to our next meeting on, whenever it is, on Wednesday, May, May first, May tenth, excuse me. And so, and all of those questions that you've just asked can only be answered by the Water Precinct. The town does not have any sway. I mean, we can certainly encourage them and make sure they give us some answers about water and whether it's available, and is it possible to get future development on, in the Water Precinct? Give them the ability to get water. So until we have water commissioners here, we really, we don't have the answers. So, but we all feel the same way. We want to know. And the planning board certainly wants to know, because if someone brings a project and we're pretty much aware that they cannot hook on to the municipal water, then they may not want to do their project. So, next meeting, May tenth, okay?
Oh, Janet.
Oh, Bill.
Joe, you may, may, may not know that for the last two months, I've gone to all of the regular Water Precinct meetings. They're held at four o'clock on the first Monday afternoon, first Monday of the month, in the afternoon. And I would encourage any of us, including you, to come to those meetings at four o'clock on the first Monday of every month. That's the opportunity, just like this, for us to address the water commissioners in their public setting.
Where do they meet, Bill?
They meet at the Water Department on Dump Road. But that's, that's the place to go. Because as Janet said, they are an independent governmental body with all their own sets of rules and regulations. But I found the meetings that I've been to, that they're very willing to talk about the issues and explain what's going on.
Okay, do you have a question?
Yep, go ahead.
Can I just do it from here? I'm just curious.
No, you got to come up here, so it gets recorded.
Bob Lyon again, just to follow up on that. I don't know what it's, what they're planning to present or not present at that next meeting on May tenth. For my benefit, a presentation by the Water Precinct. What does our aquifer look like? What is the capacity of the aquifer? Where's the pump station? Where is the well? Is, are there any other aquifers in New London? What, what is the possible way we can increase capacity? So are they planning to give us a presentation, or will it be question and answer?
We'll see. We, we really don't know what, what-
Can we ask them to give a, a presentation?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, they know that we're interested in this whole issue of not having water available to the Water Precinct.
Fantastic. I think that education will help a lot of us as we think about it.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I agree. Okay. Joan? You had a, you had something you want to talk to us about?
You want me to say something?
Yeah, and so, yeah, get up to the podium, please.
It hasn't anything to do with the water.
Okay.
I read carefully about your priorities, and I think they all are well worth your pursuing. But I was disappointed that there wasn't a priority on better treatment of our solid waste and a study made that, I mean, it's something that needs to be done. and a study made that, I mean, it's something that needs to be done for future generations. Just to, of all the towns and all the cities. And I've been studying Concord, and they've run into, their 20, 20 years are up and they have to make a decision. And they have a lot of controversy, and I'm going to follow through on that. And I just, I just was hoping that you would want to have that one of your priorities. And, because we can certainly do better than we are doing. And I don't, by we, I mean, everybody in the whole state, we all have to do better. And I just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you, Joan.
Because I think it's very necessary.
You're right, absolutely, yeah.
Joan, are you aware of the fact that composting, putting food particles into the bin is the single biggest problem we have in terms of solid waste in this town right now? It's the item that we can do the most about the quickest. I don't know if you were, I was out of town unfortunately. Did you participate at all in the solid waste discussions last Saturday? I have a handout here that's just fantastic, in terms, we have a committee of five residents who are working on this. And more than anything else, composting will get us the greatest saving, the quickest.
And that's why I didn't say anything at all.
There are other issues over which, like all of the other discussions tonight, we have very little control over. We can't deal with, we have no control over the fact that we can't find somebody to take our paper right now and that we can't find somebody to take certain kinds of plastic and so on. I know that Bob Harrington and the Solid Waste Group are working on that and pressing on that. But the biggest issue right now, in terms of what we as citizens can do without outside help, if you will, is composting. So stay tuned on all the composting news.
And I hope that, it would be great, the more people that do it, the better. And yes, I'm in favor of that. But that's been going on a long time at our Curisarch Elementary School and at the colleges. And they're, they've done it a lot, they've done a lot more than we've done here in the town.
Well, that's, that's why a year ago, the Old Solid Waste Committee was reformed into the group that's working now and focused almost entirely on composting. And at town meeting last month, we spent some more money, more of our money, putting together an expansion of the composting program to reach over 100 homes. It's a, it's a, it's a small bit, I know. I'm sorry if I'm squinting, but I've got the sun right in my eyes. It's a, it's a huge, huge issue. And it's very frustrating to find, go over to the transfer station, see us all dumping our paper into the landfill or to the bins to go to the landfill. I know Bob is working on that, but this is something, you know, get the word out, food scraps, food scraps.
Yeah, the sun's in your eye. We gotta do more than just composting.
Okay, thank you, Joan.
We've got to find out what's the best to do with what's being thrown away in the landfills. Whether there's, whether burning is better or whether it isn't. But we have to, we have to study it and find out what's, what's the worst and do something about it.
Well, that's a huge issue that, that, that may not have been listed in the priorities of that last meeting. But the whole issue about whether we should reconsider taking things to the landfill up north or burning like Concord has decided to do is, is very much on the agenda for this year as we start down the process of figuring out what, what to do in terms of that cost item. But nevertheless, it's kind of, whether it's put in the ground or burned, it's going to, the better thing would be to not get it put in the bin in the first place.
I just was hoping it would be a priority with you here in town.
Joan, it is a priority. The, our, the problem for us is finding a place to take some of this. I mean, at one time, we were shipping a lot of stuff to China, which wasn't necessarily a good thing. But we don't have any, anyone who can take plastic, and that, that's a problem. There's not anyone who's taking paper anymore in this state. So until we can find a different avenue to get rid of some of these things, we're really kind of stuck. It's not that we're not interested in doing it, but we just don't know where to take it. I guess that's the problem.
I just think, I just, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna study what Concord's doing, because they're having, their 20 years is up. And they have been doing it with wheel operator. And I'm gonna see what they finally decide. They're gonna be deciding it pretty soon.
Yeah.
And maybe they'll come up with some better ideas than what we're doing.
Correct.
Certainly sending it all to landfill up in Berlin, that's not, that's not helping us. Now we're sending all the paper along with everything else, and it's, even, you know, even if it's far away. The landfill affects all of us.
Absolutely, no, I couldn't agree with you more. And, you know, the idea of that.
As long as you consider it.
We are. Thanks, Joan. Are there any other public comments? Nope? Okay. Rules of procedure, do you all want to make any changes to the rules of procedure? Or do we accept Kim's revised version? Do I have a motion to accept the rules of procedure?
A move that we accept the rules of procedure dated April 26th, 27th, 2023.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks. There has been a request for a school zone blinking light on Pleasant Street in the area of Job Seaman's Acres and Birch Acres. Kim, do you want to give us a little update on that?
Yeah, is there anybody here? Okay. So I guess there were a couple of emails that went out, I got one and Chief Cobb got one. And the request is that we put a blinking light in the area of Job Seaman's and Birch Acres, because there's quite a few children that walk to school and the, and bicyclists that can't be on the sidewalk, they're on the road. So some of the parents feel that a blinking light would help to slow traffic down. That's coming from, what is that, south, north, east, west, up Pleasant Street towards the school. There's a fear that they're going too fast. The chief is working with the school to see whether in fact it could be a school zone. Most of you probably know there are school zone signs that blink only when school's in session. It may be that this area is too far away for that kind of sign. And I'm not entirely sure that that's what the residents would like anyway, a sign that only blinks that time. I think they may want something that blinks all the time. But we're going to find out. Bob Harrington looked into such a school zone sign, and it's about $11,000. So if we can, if, assuming that you're in favor of us continuing to look into this issue, we can get the price and then figure out if we can purchase it in this year's budget.
How does a school zone get determined? Is that determined by the?
I think it's by the school, but it's closer to the school. I think what Bob Harrington was saying is it's, this area is too far away from the school to actually be a school zone.
Except that the entrance is there, the entrance to get to the school is there.
But that's kind of further down from Job Seaman's and Birch Acres. You see where the school zone sign is near the cupola, that's pretty close.
Yeah.
What we're talking about is down further.
Oh.
Job Seaman's and Birch Acres is a bit further away from Cougar Court.
I was assuming, right, but that.
But I don't think that really makes a difference. I mean, I think that what they really want is some sort of signal that slows drivers down.
Right.
I think they said school zone because they sort of feel that it's, it's connected with children walking to school.
It would. I see.
Logically before Job Seaman's and Birch Acres, so that when you hit the corner on Pleasant Street, you slow down before you get to those two areas.
Right.
So we are looking into that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a request from the Library Board of Trustees to appoint Thomas Carley as an alternate with a one-year term. Has he filled out a volunteer form? I'm assuming he has. Yeah, does he have to, he doesn't need to do that?
No.
And who is he, whose spot is he filling in for? Just as an alternate, okay.
I'm Sheri Williams, representing the Library Board. He would be, as the RSA allows, one of three, you know, alternates. And so he's there to learn and to fill in if for some reason we don't have a quorum. And, and if we lose a board member, then he would be asked to, to join the board.
All right, so do I have a motion to appoint Thomas Carley as an alternate for a one-year term on? So moved. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We have a notation or information from Chris McAllister, our assessor. And she has recommended, or she already has implemented these, or do we have to approve them?
Yes.
Okay. Three land use tax on, three properties that have been taken out of current use. And the penalty for doing so for these three properties, for the block property on Little Sunapee is $101,700. And that is money that will come to the town. The other property belongs to Michael Hanson, and that's over by Tracy Farm. And the amount on that one is $2,200. And the third property is Robert Salmon. And I'm not sure where that one is.
Tracy Road.
Tracy Road, okay. And the penalty for taking his land out of current use is $19,000. So we need a motion to accept these recommendations from Chris McAllister. Okay, you have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. So now we need to finalize appointments to Archives, Planning Board, there's no changes, Housing Commission, Election Workers, and the Citizens Committee.
Right, so I can, I'll read the names if that'll be helpful.
Okay.
So these are ones that we haven't finished from the last time. So we have Archives, Jim Perkins, Nancy Dutton, Linda Miller. Planning Board, Jeremy Bonin, Joe Cubitt, and Catherine Vedova. Housing Commission, Nancy Rollins as an alternate member. Citizens Committee, Patty Beechock. And for Inspector of Elections, Michael Todd, the moderator, requests Nancy Rollins.
So do I have a motion to accept all those names for the various committees? So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I, I want to remind everyone that all of these meetings are open to the public. You do not have to be an appointed member to attend one of these meetings. And all of them are posted on our website. Next, we have to determine the observance dates for July 4th fireworks. This year, July 4th is on a Tuesday. And I guess I would recommend, since we discussed this last summer, that we would consider July 1st and 2nd, July 4th, and July 7th and 8th to allow fireworks by individuals. So say it one more time. Okay, so July, July 4th is on a Tuesday. And if we want people who will be shooting off fireworks, they'll probably want to do it the weekend before and the weekend after the 4th. So I'm recommending July 1st and 2nd, and July 7th and 8th. On July 8th, the Pleasant Lake Protective Association is having their display. But that's different, that's not impacted by this. And as well as the 4th? They're not doing it on the 4th. No, no, no. Are you recommending the, the, one of the days to be allowed to be the actual 4th? Oh, yeah. Yes, okay. Yeah, five days, there are five days. First, second, fourth, seventh, eighth. Correct. Sounds good, not just to be devil's advocate, do we want to include the 3rd? Is the 3rd a holiday, I assume? The day before? Is it a day off? No, it's not?
Shouldn't I consider the 3rd?
Not at this point, should we? That's a Monday.
We could do July 4th week, how about the whole week?
Exactly, the people, the people that have to enforce.
Let it run that weekend, Tuesday.
Right. Maybe we should just do it for the whole week, from the 1st to the 8th, through the 8th?
Yes.
Does that sound like a good idea?
July 4th week, okay.
Yeah, the whole week, okay. Might as well. And when the 4th doesn't fall on a Tuesday or a Wednesday, it'll be a little easier going forward. Just because of the way it falls. Right, okay. Exactly. So do I? First through the 8th. I may, I may make a motion to approve the 1st through the 8th as the allowable dates for fireworks. Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Kim, do you have a, one thing before you begin? Just want to thank you, it was a great municipal matters, very newsy.
So we try, we like the pictures too. So if anybody out there has pictures that are good, please.
So you want to give us your report, please?
All departments have been very busy. Hopefully, everybody's seen Highway out there with the street sweeper, getting up all that sand. So they've been busy in cleaning up brush and all the rest of it. With regard to our priorities that we're working on, the wage study, RFP has gone out and you'll have that, those results on May 10th. The priority of the capital reserves discussion, I know Chris Lorio has reached out to his Budget Committee members to try and get a joint meeting, so we'll work on that. And obviously, we already spoke about the relationship with the Water Precinct. Ken Jakes had hoped to come tonight, but he will come to your next meeting. And with regard to priorities, I did add a new section on your agenda. We can move it anywhere. My thinking of putting it at the end was so that sometimes it seems like we're, with meetings, if things are early on, we feel rushed to get to other things in the agenda. It really wasn't about having, hoping people leave. It was more about having the rest of the meeting to work on it. But we can certainly put those things anywhere. I only selected Police Station because those other priorities, there's not much to say about them because we're working on them, so. But feel free to let me know if you'd like to move it up earlier in the meeting, perfectly fine. That's all I have.
Bill, do you have any reports?
Yes, Europe is great.
Okay, all right. Bebe, have you been to, or conducted any meetings?
Yes, I went to the first meeting of the Tri-Town Watershed Advisory Group there with the Newbury Selectman Kristen Schultz and Sunapee Selectman Carol Wallace, along with the LSBA new director, Elizabeth, Jack Cutner and Stu Greer. So we talked about priorities of that group. Some things that we talked about was the septic regulation for Sunapee, reviewing that. The road salt and the, I think, I can't remember the third one, do I have it written down? But we've scheduled a first meeting for May 19th at the LSBA office for 9:00 a.m. And we're inviting the town managers and administrators and the health officers. So I've already let Kim know, Kim was going to reach out to Dr. Bear, and hopefully they can be there. And the, and the present, and there will be a presentation by the Sunapee Town Manager about the status of their new septic regulation. So if either of you have any questions that you want posed during that meeting, just let me know and I can, I can pose those questions. One question that I know I have, and Kim and I talked about it, is, you know, the regulation states that these rules are going to be on the people that are living closer to the lake? And kind of, is that, is that discriminating against that group of people? Is, have they heard any complaints about that yet? Is the, so that's what I'm curious about. But in reading the regulation, it makes sense because of the priority of the regulation is to protect the water in the lake. So anyway, it was, it was good. They're very, they're excited about moving forward.
Great, thank you for going.
Yeah, yeah, it's interesting.
There was a Planning Board meeting last Tuesday, April 25th. And we got a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit by Peter and Kathy Block, that's on Little Sunapee. Also, the New London Hospital Association is moving one of their oxygen tanks. And so we had to review it for setbacks. And then Lynn and Damian Petrie, they're, they're located on 24 Pleasant Street. I don't know, you may have seen the blue barn that they've erected for their gutter business. And they just changed back to totally, they have, were going to live there, but they're not. So they're going back to a commercial entirely. So that was, that was it. There were no exterior changes to that building. Do you have any questions? Okay. The next item is priorities. Bill, you were going to talk about the Police Station?
My turn, okay. As, as Kim just suggested, and we've been talking. As Kim just suggested, and we've been talking about throughout this meeting, I think we agreed when we talked about our priorities that we would have this on the agenda every time, and, but we can't talk about every priority every, every time.
Right.
Because sometimes things haven't gone very far. But certainly, the water issue and the wage issue are, will have on the next agenda. That's, that's great. Police Station thing, just for our conversation tonight, I thought we'll go back and the report that the subcommittee did divided the characteristics into three sort of groupings. One was the land, just the piece of land, the property. The second was the building, and the third was what was called geographic location. And I thought it might be useful for us to sort of stand back and think a little bit about the location, geographic location issue. Because one of the things that's still hanging out there is the question, well, why not just stay, stay where we are? Or why don't we renovate Bukeur, or buy the property next door, or do something still along Siemens Road? And as I've read back through the report and the, talked with the police chief about these issues, it seems to me that at least five of the six location, geographic locations that were discussed by the, by the committee and were sort of accepted by all of us, really are, indicate the issue with staying on Siemens Road. The first is the security and hardening issue. It's hard to imagine how we can create the perimeter and the hardening and the security that I heard talked about now for some period of time, simply because we don't have enough space to do that. We're right on the street, whether we're here, or whether we're in the, whether we're in the Bukeur Building or the house next door. The second is parking. There doesn't seem to be any reasonable answer to parking here. We can't use the town green to park. We talked, or at least some of us talked a couple of years ago, back when I was on the board the first time, about perhaps getting some parking across the street from the college. And that didn't seem like a very good idea, and college wasn't too warm on that one. The third is, is the tower. We usually are talking about the building, but there's also the tower question, and that something needs to be done to increase the capacity or the height of the tower to be able to deal with the repeaters on the two different mountains. And so, you know, how would we handle that if we were to stay in this, this location? The third is expansion space. There's always been, in both through the master plan and through most of the discussions that I've listened to, to say, if we're going to do something, spend the kind of money that everybody's talking about on a police facility of some sort, there ought to be the capacity to expand. Now, I realize that gets everybody to shudder, because why shouldn't we decide now what we need for the next 50 years? But the example I'm going to use and have been using, without suggesting that it's going to happen, is what happens if, five years from now, the New London Hospital says, in their wisdom, we no longer want to have an ambulance service. Congratulations, town, you now have an ambulance service. Where would we put that? Wouldn't we need some sort of expansion capacity for that? Other times, you've heard discussions that the cemetery trustees have said, wow, you know, we sure are going to need additional land for cemetery eventually. So might not a location that also had that capacity be something to talk about. And then the fifth of the issues about geographic location that sort of, I think we've missed so far, is we've got to have identity for where the police department is. Well, if there's ever a location that doesn't have identity, it's down the side street here on Siemens Road. I mean, that's sort of stands in contrast to the other location criteria that was in the report, which was be on the main corridor between Main Street or Newport Road and other, other suggestions that were made about sites that might be chosen that met some of the other criteria were eliminated because they didn't have the identity of the, of the main drags. And so that all caused me to go back and say, you know, maybe what we need to do is to release, we've discovered through some 30 or 40 properties that we can't really meet all those criteria because we've voted down the most likely one, the so-called Beulie Land, the Broome Properties. We, some of us think it has some issues, not the least of which is there's no expansion space there if you were able to use that site. And the so-called Crescenti property, I suppose, is still in play to some extent if one could convince Twin Pines that they wanted to give up part of the rest of that land, that they have an option on. But that really doesn't really deal with the identity issue either. So I was going to suggest that we have a discussion in the future about opening up the question of whether or not it has to be, a facility has to be within the confines of the Catholic Church to the shopping center. And think about, rethink the issue about location. If we could find a location that gave security and hardening, gave parking, suited the tower, gave expansion, created identity, without necessarily being between the Catholic Church and the shopping center, that might sort of open up the discussion for more positive outcomes here. The question about Newport Road and Main Street, we've never really resolved the reason why that's so important in this day and age. I think the police activity is largely generated by cruises, cruisers going around, not by people dropping by Siemens Road. The location of the communications center could be anywhere. It certainly, it doesn't have to be on Siemens Road. Some part of the town's major activity seems to have shifted down closer to the post office with the shopping center, now with the Twin Pines development, with the hospital expansion in the last decade, and perhaps more happening on their land. So it seems to me that we might just want to have a more far-reaching discussion about what are the actual characteristics of geographic location that are important to us. I don't think that, that the police statistics show that having to be next to Colby Sawyer College is significant in any way, shape, or form. They have an excellent campus safety staff of their own, one of whom some of the people here know fairly well. And the elementary school does not seem to have been a major issue. And I know that they've done a number of drills there where the police have participated. But the likelihood that if there were an incident at the school, that somebody in a police building would be the first one there as compared to the cruiser or cruisers that are on the road is, you know, is a toss-up. It depends where the cruisers happen to be at that point. And the activity of the police department at first blush is really out where the people are, not in the building. What we need the building for is to house the, the staff, give them a place where they can train, dress, work with their armory, their armors, their arms, where the communications center can be located, and where two people, the chief and the detective, can have offices. But we're not talking about an office building. We're talking about a building that would facilitate the activities that are create, are created throughout the town. And obviously, at some point, if somebody has to be arrested and brought in, then they have to be brought in and booked. But that doesn't need to be in the center of town either. So I think we might begin to look around a bit more at sites outside of the geographic boundaries that we've been working with. That's been my sort of thought over the last month or so. Lots of airplane-riding time and so on gave me a chance to write a few things down. So I don't know what we want to do with that, whether either of you want to comment on it, or think about it, or whatever.
Think about it is a good idea. BB, do you have any questions or?
No. I think thinking about it is a good idea, too. I think I've had a lot of people come, approach me and talk to me about this, this issue, and have had a lot of really great conversations. I think a community forum is really important as we move on down the line, again, talking, bringing up this topic again, which we may be back at square one. I, I believe a presence on, between the Catholic Church to the shopping center is important. My, just my opinion. I'll think about it more, because now that you mentioned it, but my, that's my first reaction when you say that, is I think it is important to be in that main drag. And I know some, half the people think it would be better down by the shopping center where there's more business going on. Half the people want, still want to see it up on this end of town. That, I don't know if it'll ever please everybody with that sort of a decision or conversation. I'm still not totally, I still haven't, I'm still thinking a little bit about, about keeping it in this area. I know you two have made the decision that this, and I respect both of your decisions on that, and I have listened very hard to, to both of you on, on that front. I'm, but I'm just, I'm just thinking of everything right now. I think there's so much to think about, I don't even know where to start. I don't, I, I'm not convinced that this can be renovated at all. And I know there's a, there's a large group of people that do believe that this could be renovated. I'm not. I'd rather see a new building, because I feel like this, if we're going to put this investment in, it's got to be a building that can last 50 years. And I've had conversations with other chiefs of police that have new buildings, and that they've said the same, don't bother renovating. It's, you won't get what, what you need. And with technology improving so quickly with law enforcement, the, the, the needs of the police department change so quickly these days as well. So it's got to be a building where you, where, to be able to think ahead, to be able to pivot and make those changes as necessary. So I don't know where to start, but it's, 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 I think it's important that it's an agenda item that we try to at least talk about.
My concern, BB, and the reason I went through this thought process and went back to the, to the report, is to say that the goal of having it within that boundary seemed to make sense at the beginning, and that, but now we're doing some rethinking. And then I look at the other characteristics that have been clearly articulated, going all the way back to the harem and work and so on, and I say, I don't know how, there do not appear to be parcels of land that are available within those boundaries that allow us to meet those goals. And if that's the case, and we have to give on something, maybe that's the one we have to give on because we've discovered, or learned, or whatever term you want to use, that there, you know, Will Rogers once said, there ain't no land, they aren't making any more of it. And, you know, the college is not willing to give up any of their land, the hospital doesn't want to give up any of their land. And if you take the maps of the town from those two points, you will not find very many two-acre parcels of land.
Yeah.
That will allow you to have the security that the police professionals believe are necessary, to have the parking, to have the location for the tower, and to have the expansion space. It's a dilemma. I mean, because I think, I thought when the subcommittee started their work 15 months ago, or whatever it was, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. But now I'm looking and saying, they did all that work and didn't find anything. I mean, and the one thing that we found that might work, the town voted down. So, you know, I think we have to relax something. We could relax any one of these characteristics, I guess, and try to say, now what, how, what would work. Right? That's the dilemma we have right now. I share with you, you know, what would be nice versus what's, what could be done at this point. It's a good, good discussion to have.
Yeah. It is. And I saw the document that would, that was created by the, is it the International Federation of Police Officers, the guidelines of building a new police department. I'd like to refer back to that, and I'd actually like to even maybe reach out to a group like that to see if they have guidelines already out there that, I mean, you guys are many more years into this than I am. I feel like I'm starting from scratch, but that, that's just on my own sort of.
That's a benefit for us to have somebody starting from scratch, frankly.
Yeah. Yeah. It is. But on my own, I plan to kind of do a little bit of that sort of research, and can report back to.
Great.
For whatever it's worth.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm still thinking. I mean, I do have some thoughts about where it might be located, but I'm going to think about it a little bit more. Is anyone here would like, any members of the public like to come up and say anything? Peter?
Hi. I'm Pete Hogland. How do you plan to go about this priority search? Are you going to put a committee together again? Are you going to do it amongst yourselves? I heard community forum, but I, there'd be a lot of people to deal with in a community forum. So I'm just curious as to how you would go about it. And to a point, there are three towns I know right now that have renovated their own buildings again. Wolfboro being one, Franklin being another, and I even think that.
I think Newberry's doing it, too.
Newberry's doing it, too. And there's another one in, over by Laconia, that's actually right in the center of town, that they actually built a new building right in the neighborhood in the center of town. So I was just curious how you're going to go about it again. I mean, the subcommittee, I thought, did a good job. I think we did good research. I don't think we investigated the second option of the Broome Building as well as we could have potentially, especially with the land next to it. So I'm just curious what your process is. How do you think it's going to work? Because it's very important. And I think, you know, policemen should be on the road. That's their job. They should be in cruisers, and maybe have different cruisers or better cruisers. That's their office. That's where they work. And I'll bring up something, it's, probably goes to public comment, but I'd like to bring it up now, and maybe I should talk to the chief about it. Terrible problem with stop signs in this town. It's unbelievable, the amount of people, if you go down, go down Knights Hill, County Road, Burpee Hill. I've almost been hit twice. Came to a stop once, and someone came right through the stop sign and went up. I see rolling stops. Is that something I should take up with the chief? Because people don't stop. It's amazing to me how little.
In our neighborhood.
Oh, it happened tonight. Somebody came right through the stop sign when I was coming up here. Didn't even stop, just came right through and kept going. So is that something I should take up with the chief? Okay. So to your point, are you going to committee, or how are you going to do it, Bill? Thank you.
First of all, it's not me.
Well, I know. I mean, I mean, it's a selectmen's group, but how, how's it going to be done?
We're going to think about it, Peter. Okay.
Okay.
We're going to have a lot more public discussions just like this, where we just talk out loud to each other. That's the way it has to work. It's all done in public, and, you know, you've heard BB and me sort of go back and forth on some things tonight, but at least to get the ball rolling, Janet asked me to get the ball rolling, and I thought, well, rather than, than sort of just throwing something against the wall, I'd pick particularly this issue of geographic location, because it's a boundary that you all did a good job of working on, but you also came up with a lot of dry wells in digging there. And I don't see, I think we all don't see the pieces of land that are available to do something. The one we thought would work, the town voted against, so there we are.
Well, I'm not convinced they voted against it because of the location. I think it was the price that was, after we had the appraisal done.
Well, that's fair enough.
That's fair enough.
Played into it significantly.
That's fair enough. Yep. Good, good point.
Nancy, did you want to say something?
Nancy Marashio, I'm just curious about the Broome project in terms of its status with the board. The second choice.
We never, we haven't gotten anywhere. We haven't talked about it, basically.
I would suggest you do.
Okay.
Nancy, there are two, two issues. We haven't talked about it, but just maybe bringing BB. We haven't talked about it, but just maybe bringing Bebe up to speed or whatever. First of all, 2.2-plus million dollars, it's a lot of money to buy for a piece of land with a building that probably would have to be torn down. But more importantly, Adam Ricker, the town planner, has reinforced with me recently that the town would have a very difficult time buying the adjoining piece of land to create an adequate amount of total acreage there. The issue of its, of the status of the Bar Harbor Bank condominiumizing that land under a planned unit development raises some serious legal questions about the town probably would not want to get engaged in in terms of trying to buy that piece of land and annex it.
I do recall a conversation of the committee where the chief thought you might be able to get away with the land that's just the Broome property. I just think when we gave our additional things, we asked that there be follow-up with the top three properties. Crescenti obviously got out, but Broome really hasn't been followed through.
So that's a good question. What follow-up would you suggest? Help us out. What would you suggest?
I would suggest that you look at the building or have the building looked at to see if, in fact, it is usable. There was a fair amount of discussion about that, but that was something that you had to follow up with. We only could look at it and suggest the properties. But at least take a look at it.
Yeah. Actually, Nancy, I've talked to Kim about, I'd forgotten that I'd talked to Kim about this, and we think that we should pay a visit to the building, but Chief Cobb should see it, and she has not seen it. So that was one thing. She's on vacation this week, so when she gets back, we will try to set a time when we can take her and we can look at it. Okay. Yeah, I forgot that we had done that, so anyway, we're moving on. Go ahead.
So I heard a few statements about why the property was voted down at the town meeting. I imagine there were a number of reasons why people voted against it. One of the issues that I brought up, and I know that Colin also made this point in his speech, is that that vote to get the property was really a referendum on a new police station. We weren't just voting on getting that land. Technically, we were because it could be used for kite flying, for soccer fields, but I've never been to a meeting where anybody talked about anything except a police station. So I believe that that vote, and I think a lot of people in that room, they were like, they were thinking, "Well, wait a minute, we're going backwards here. We need to vote first on whether or not we need a new police station, not vote to buy the land with the intent to put up a police station." So in my mind, I could be wrong, but I think that a lot of people felt that way. So my point here is not to argue against it. I think there needs to be a sell-in to the town. We need to sell people on the idea that we need a new police station. That needs to get voted on first. My view is a renovation? I don't know. Maybe possible, maybe not, I don't know. But we could look at that and get a cost. We could look at options to get land and get a cost. And then we need to go back to the population, the citizens here, and it needs to go up for a vote, do we want to have a new police station? Otherwise, it's going to be a vote like the one that we just had, which was, "Let's vote on this land, let's vote on this building," but we haven't voted for a police station yet. So I think that's the piece that, I guess this is in my own mind, we need to be careful. We need to sell that in first, that there is this need, get that voted on, but have a plan should that, and maybe it can be presented as a package. But what I'm seeing here tonight, it's almost going down that same path. Let's find a piece of land, let's find a piece of property. It might not be between the church and the shopping center, which I have no objections to. But I think we need to be careful about how we position that, or we're going to go down that same road again, and it could get voted down again. So I think we need to be careful with that. Thank you. Any comments?
I'll comment on that simply, it's an old chicken and egg issue, isn't it? But how do you decide what a, what a new police station would look like if you don't know where it's going to go and don't have architectural drawings and so on and so forth? But I will quote to you from the 2022 New London Master Plan. I think everybody in the room knows, but we've got it on record for the recording. There was a community forums held in 2000, before COVID, and surveys were taken, there were over 800 people involved, and, quote, "The existing police department has been identified as inadequate through extensive study with inputs from town officials, department personnel, and community members. There's been significant debate and study conducted to determine what the best option for improving the police department's space is. The survey results show that 73% of the respondents, over 800 people, support the concept of relocating the police department to a facility that is suitable for their needs and allows for the Buca Building to be repurposed for other town needs." Now, maybe the 250 or 300 people who were at town meeting last month weren't included in that 73% of people, but you can keep getting another group of people together and ask their opinion and vote, and you can phrase the question this way or that way. But I've still come away, and the reason I've been championing this now, I'm on my fourth try, is because I attended all those meetings, have talked to a lot of people in running for election for selectman twice, and the overwhelming desire is to have a new police station, but it needs to have a place to go. So that's where we are. Could throw this whole master plan away if we want, but if we don't use that as a guidance, I don't know what we will. And I'm sure Colin is now going to question the data handling, but also I can say that in talking to people over a long period of time, there is a desire to have a new police facility in this town. Yep. If you go online, Bob, the entire master plan is there on the planning board site.
Colin Beasley, you're right, Bill. I do want to challenge you a little bit. So that master plan verbiage is referring to page 70, 47 of the survey. And we've had these discussions across the town now for a few years, and there's a number of folks, including me, who would argue that the question number 21 on page 47, being a leading question, would result in the answers that you received. If you take a look at page 49 of that survey, that laid out the various priorities the town gave, there were 10 of them. The police department came in number eight. The community center came in number seven. And if you look at the details underlying page 49 of that study on page 50 and how people actually prioritize them, of the 10 items ranked in each ranking, 1 through 10, the police department didn't rise to the top at all, and it rose to the top three only twice. So for example, in the ranking of the 10, for the number one, the police department was number eight. If you look at the third ranking and the 10th ranking, the police department was number two and number three respectively. All of the rankings, they were down at four, five, seven, and nine. So my only point is that data can be interpreted anywhere you want, and when you take a survey and create verbiage off of one chart without explaining the other chart, you can sway the conversation. The point is that the community actually chose a community center before a police department, and there's been no work done on that at all, anywhere. But there's been a ton of work done on the police station. So we can talk about priorities all we want. I think the real issue is, and by the way, it's very important for people to understand, I think the police station needs work. It's no secret that I do believe that renovation is possible and that the 10,000-square-foot new building versus the 9,400-square existing building, you're 600 feet off. So I do believe we need work there. They do need a better building. They do need process changes. I think spending a lot of money at a new location, I've said my piece, but I think it's very important that when we refer to data in the master plan, we refer to all the data. That's all I'm asking.
Thank you, Colin. We're always going to disagree on this point. I attempted to make this point with more clarity at the town meeting, but the town moderator cut me off. So enough said, but I think anybody who carefully reads that report, talks to people who participated in the preparation of it, the nine members of the planning board at the time and so on, will find that the master plan is a pretty useful document to live by. The only major capital investments that were included in the 10 points that you bring out were the sidewalks and the police facility. Everything else has to do with sustainability, livability, mobility, and issues like that. We're talking about what capital investments should the town be making for the next several decades of people. And one of the ways it'll make this town a better town to live in and a better place to be is to have a quality police facility. I continue to believe that, and I believed it for all the times I've been trying this, and I know that I will never get those of you who are sitting here to agree with me, but that's my position.
Joe Cardello, I'm not going to talk about the police department, except that it does play into, going back to master plans, what's on the list, and what I talked about earlier. And just from where I sit, I know it's a precinct situation, and we're going to wait to see what the precinct has to say. I can only assume, because conversations I've come up, would the town contribute money towards water solutions? In my mind, 1 million, 3 million, 5 million, 8 million, it's more important that it's spent towards water than some of these other items. We've got to get that problem solved.
No question, Joe. Water is right up there at the top of the, top of the list, but it's only come recently. And I think I urged you earlier, and I urge you again, to go regularly to the water precinct meetings and find out what their plans are. They do have some plans, and as I think you all know, one of the members of the former Building Facilities Committee is now one of the commissioners of the water district. And so there should be an ease of conversation with him as well as the other two commissioners. So these are not mutually exclusive discussions at all.
Okay, moving on. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 30?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? We don't have the minutes of April 6 yet, so we'll hold those off. Our next regular selectmen's meeting is going to be Wednesday, May 10, and we're going to meet at 5:30 at the Professional Development Center at the school. The Energy Committee is meeting May 3 at 7:00 p.m. Recreation Commission Thursday, May 4 at 5:30 p.m. The Board of Firewars Monday, May 8 at 4:30 p.m. The Sunape Sewer Commissioner joint meeting with the selectmen, with the New London Selectmen is May 8 at 5:30 p.m. in Sunape. And the planning board will meet next on Tuesday, May 9 at 6:30 p.m., and they are meeting at the Professional Development Center. The Town Clerk Tax Collector Office is closed Wednesday, May 10. And the Conservation Commission is meeting Wednesday, May 17 at 8:30 a.m. And the Housing Commission is meeting Wednesday, May 31. Both of those meetings are in the secret room. So if anybody's interested, I think, I suggest you check the town's calendar to see where the meetings are. So is there anything else, any other business besides pay vouchers? Okay, we'll go ahead and do that.
[applause]
Yep.
Anything?
Yeah.
Ask someone how to go away.
Sure.
The discussion about the paper at the transfer station just got me thinking. I'm just curious, has anybody, I think that the place on, is it Otter Pond, where they burn wood and they burn wood chips to create electricity?
You're the Lumber Company or?
Pardon me?
Hemp Hill Power.
Would they be amenable to taking our paper? Paper comes from trees, and we could give it to them. They would have, they could produce electricity from our paper. I'm just wondering if anybody's posed that question? And maybe we actually save money, you know, we just bring it over there and they burn it. I'm sure they have scrubbers. I mean, they couldn't just be burning wood without scrubbers, right?
They mainly burn wood chips.
Right, but paper is made from wood, right?
Right, no, I know, but I don't know whether they have the capability to take paper.
I suggest that, I don't know who would do that, if it's a conservation commission or one of these.
Certainly, but I'm guessing if their state license allowed them to burn paper, they'd be asking towns for paper, for free paper.
It might be a good thing not to assume, but just to check.
Yep.
Fair enough, and you're probably right.
Oh, I'm assuming they haven't called us for paper. They definitely have not called us looking for our newspaper.
And they wouldn't take any of my wood either, which was, but, because they were afraid of nails and things like that. But, you know, if we could, and just an idea, just a thought.
Thank you.
Well, and one thing you should keep in mind with regard to the wood, it's only because we're in Merrimack County and the Emerald Ash Bore is here, but it's not in Sullivan County where the power plant is.
Oh, that's why they don't want to take the firewood.
And they don't want to take any firewood or any wood from London.
Got it, makes sense, makes sense.
They used to take our wood and use it for...
I mean, it's worth a phone call. I mean, it's just worth a, it'd be like, you know, a minute, a minute long to get the answer of, "No, we don't want your paper," so.
Right.
It could go fast. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.